Everybody was here, Ms. Kibby's. Kibby's hands down, you knew he was gonna be there.
It is six thirty. If everybody would stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Dryer, if you would call the roll, please.
Mayor Carney?
Here.
Ms. D. Daly?
Here.
Ms. Ferguson?
Here.
Mr. Aronman?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Sins?
Here.
Mr. Terry?
Here.
Are there any additions or amendments to tonight's council meeting? If there are no amendments or additions, the council meeting agenda will stand as read. Is there a motion to approve the council work session meeting minutes from January third, two thousand twenty-four?
Motion to approve. Second.
Ms. D. Daly?
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Aronman?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Sins?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Meeting minutes were approved with a motion of six to zero. We have, we do not have any proclamations this evening, but we do have several visitors and Ms. Dority, I'm gonna have you be the final visitor. But first up, we have Mr. Barry Thomas. If you would like to take the... Okay, Mr. Ron Nguyen, senior? And I'm not sure if you've been to council yet this year where we have implemented a three-minute time limit per...
Three minutes?
Yes.
Thank you. You hear me okay?
Yes.
The reason I'm here is, I know we have some new council members and I know, I don't know how many of you folks here heard of Nicky, Donnie Nicky. If you're currently here in Plain City, you probably didn't. But Donnie Nicky is one of the finest athletes that Plain City has ever produced. He has tremendous record, a little bit of his background. What I'm wanting to do, or what we're wanting to do, is find someplace where we can honor him with these signed or plaque, signed along the right way. Plain City has nothing like that. They do have their place out. But let me go over them real quick, the information with them real quick. I think I handed out, hand out to everybody. Maybe actually did not get one. Actually, do you have one more?
Sure. Thank you.
Yeah. Looking at the front of the year, there's a Nicky attended Johnsonover High School, Allstate Center, Gilbert, as part of the nineteen ninety-eight Ohio State Athletic Association of the Day Championship. That was in baseball. He did the same thing, all the high running back. Same year, Ohio State, that was with Johnsonover. And then he played for Ohio State University, was a co-captain with Mike Dolph on the two thousand and two NCAA National Championship team. He had an NFL career, eight years with Tennessee Titans. He's a phenomenal player, a wonderful gentleman. What we would like to do is have something like this, this signage from London that could be promoted. So we'll do a two-square foot place somewhere in the property on one sixty-one between the Albert Mount Valley and the Cret, where we could sign such as this and honor him and any other persons that deemed beyond. So that's what we're asking for, not much. Have any questions on that side, answer, try and get you back to issue some answers. This is a picture, the sign briefly here, is that we're looking at. Do you have one made up or similar to that? I'll let you want to take some time and think about it? If you're great, you can come back next week, next meeting, and discuss it. Any questions?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Nguyen.
Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Mr. Thomas? Did you want to speak next?
The only thing I want to say, the sign that you folks made, you can't even read it, it's a big star. And I made one, four foot by four foot. And that's the one we want to put up someplace in the village. I got the beach off two farms outside of town to do it, but it does look the village. I just gotta put it in town sometime, whatever I can. But the one you put down, and it's okay that you guys did that, but you can't reach the thing, it's too small. I should. I don't know if I should talk to you about it before we put it up again, but I seem to remember this office. Anyway, I have you sign that already. Four foot by four foot. Make that one. I'll put one more down there.
Those are people down too, they're collecting, and we had to sign that.
Oh, hang on, before we start, I'm so sorry, but we're trying to keep a protocol and everything where it's not like back and forth and everything, so that's why we're trying to have it be three minutes per person. So that's why I'm, if you're...
Well, that's all I got to say. I just want to get that done. You folks think about it a little bit. I have each way to put it up on two farms out, right on the outskirts of the village. And I'd love to put it in town, in the village. Donnie's a good person. You folks probably don't know him. I don't want anybody in here to know him, but he's a good person. Fire. He lived down in...
Nashville.
Nashville right now, but he got beat up real bad playing for Titans. And Eddie George took him down there, and Eddie coached the football team down there, and he's left him there. They don't have to take care of the football players, worked with Donnie, and he told them, I'm off. I'm helping him off. Anyway. You put things back. I'm gonna put that sign down somewhere.
The same, I shouldn't recognize it, I should too.
And the...
The framework would be such that any other person could also have their name put on that sign.
Yeah, yeah.
That typical, what they're doing every place else, Marysville, London, West Jefferson, and about any picture you go into the town, you'll see what they're commemorating someone.
Well, and I appreciate your, everybody's time. I do want to give, Mrs. Thomas, do you have anything to add? Okay, I just want to make sure, like, if you were added on here. I can't speak for the rest of council, but I can say, and I will let them, you know, speak as well. But I do know that when you first came to council, Mr. Thomas, that brought us the concerns. We, along with staff, took an extensive amount of time to come up with this recognition program so that it's fair, fair for everybody that... No, I'm sorry, I'm gonna speak right now.
Go ahead.
We have taken the time, vetted a process, have the location, and it's not really for, like, if you're satisfied with it. I know this is very, very important to you, and I know it's important to many people in town that knew Mr. Nicky. And I'm not dismissing that at all. But I'm not, no, I'm not done talking yet, Mr. Nguyen. For us here in the village, we do not have a desire to add any additional signage at this time. We have worked hard to come up with a recognition program where people can bring it, just like, we created the program specifically for this. I'm sorry you're disappointed in the sign, but if somebody else were to apply for such a sign and recognition, they would go through the same process, and that's what we are in the, in the business of doing, is making sure that's fair for everybody here in the village of Plain City. Fellow council members, if you would like to chime in, but that's where we're standing as of today.
Can I say one thing for at least? If it don't happen, there's gonna be eight businesses in here in town very unhappy with this whole bunch.
Yep.
Very unhappy.
My hearing is very, I cannot catch everything that you said. I would like to, I have, you had any of that on record?
In our minutes, that has been like that we...
The reason why, the reason why you don't think that we should allow that, you can allow that?
So I think what you're asking is if what she...
Can I approach?
Sure.
Yeah.
I think you're asking if what she said...
I can catch all that stuff.
It's all recorded, everything's recorded, we're on video.
Yeah.
So to answer your question, yes, it's on record, it's recorded.
That, okay, and I didn't catch, what was the reason behind it?
We created this sign.
I'm sorry?
We created this sign.
You created one?
And we have a very nice sign holding, holder, out, it's between Shider Farms and Darby Station. It is off the road at this moment is where it was placed. But we have went through the whole extensive of making sure that, okay, if, say, somebody, another person had other accolades that wanted to say, to come in and have a sign, that there was a process. So we created that process.
Yeah.
It's not, the sign to Mr. Thomas, it was not adequate in his opinion. Now, for council and staff, we did our due diligence. We, we put a sign up.
Okay, there, yeah, there's a sign put up. I haven't seen the sign, but I understood was when you're driving by, you can't even see it. So, which I will take the effort to go to look at. And, but what I was recommending was something like the sign they have over in London. Something such as that right there.
And we thought about that too, and even London's mayor, when I talked to him about their, they want to move their signs because it's, it's very like, it's like, where do you stop?
Well, that's London, but that typical, the sign I want, not with the location right now.
Our sign was, I'm trying to remember the exact, but we went through and we were like, okay, if somebody else wanted to have a sign placed, like, we placed it out, and that's how it was created. Oh, many of us...
I'm a little confused too. Mr. Thomas said his sign is four foot by four foot. These signs are not four foot by four foot, and you recommended a two-foot square sign. I think that's within our requirements that we, that we came up with.
The sign...
Four foot by four foot, that's bigger than all these put together almost.
The sign, I haven't measured those right there, but at least it needs to be visible as you're driving in without having to stop and measure. That's all that we're asking for. I haven't taken the time to go through and measure those. They had that sign made up, and I will, I will, I will move to Marysville and every place else and measure their signs. But something such as that right there, built such as that, for anyone tomorrow or the day after, if they earn those honors, they can have that sign put up.
Well, and we have it come through our process, just so that it, that there's like, because who's to say that somebody from Jerome Village, they, they say, well, I'm Plain City, I deserve this honor.
No, that would have to be approved.
Right.
Yes, yes, yes.
If they have the credentials this gentleman has, not gonna understand, not me, I'm a great fisherman. They're not gonna put mine in there. I don't, I don't ask you to. Somebody else is a great runner, but if they went through championships, they deserve to be put up there. So, and you said you have this already?
We have a whole program, a whole...
Can I get copies of the program?
It's on the webs, it is on the website.
Okay.
It should be, Ms. Leptin, what part of the website is our, is the recognition?
It is under Residents, Community Resources, Citizens Recognition Program.
Citizens Recognition?
Yep.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'll be getting back with you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Heather Dority with Scenic Rivers, and staff has requested that council waive the visitor time limit. Are there any objections to waive to not allowing Ms. Dority to speak over three minutes?
No, no taxes, whatever time she needs.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. That's, I feel like, I love that they're very good with social media. I appreciate it, so is working okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. I'm Heather Dority, I'm the Regional Scenic River Manager at ODNR. That includes Big Derby Creek. And I know I've had the pleasure of working with some of you already. I appreciate Hallie's invitation to be here tonight, and I, I've worked with a number of your departments here at Plain City. We get in talks development and building our parks. And we've enjoyed a canoe float last summer for some of us to go look at the river and talk about the things that are going on with it. And the reason is, I'm sure you're all aware, that Big Darby is an incredible resource. It's significant, I've known it regionally, but on the state level, it's one of our best rivers. Significant at our national level in terms of state, basically, in terms of expenses. So I know that, you know, there's a lot happening here in Plain City, and your agenda speaks to that. There's a lot of activity, which is, you know, a lot of great opportunities for growth, but I think a major change can be really hard on rivers. And I know I've had conversations with some of you about this in more depth than others, but just to give you an idea of that, concrete generates five times the amount of runoff that a little bit of water. So when you, when you deliver it out to a river, it brings a lot of issues with additional flooding, pollution, erosion. So we're initiating, exploring an initiative that we'd like to ask Plain City to partner with us on, and that is to do some modeling for the river. We have a program called the Integrated Prioritization System, or IPS. I will, you're like, I'm down to you.
Actually, we have it, yes.
You have it, great, okay.
In our packet.
Wonderful, perfect. So the Missus Bio-Hersey Institute, Columbus, is the, the outfit that's doing it, they run it in Cincinnati and Chicago, and like any, any model, you input data, and then you ask it to predict what might be based on what it already knows. So this, this model, we had all kinds of biological information, chemical data, land use, all kinds of stuff for all over the other side of the basin, so way more than just the urban water in just one city. And so I think they'll make it an asset to predict what happens if there's specific stressors happen to the river, and also, you know, proactive actions that we can take to protect the river. So I think the idea is that it provides a real basis of data for guiding decision-making, something a little more concrete, which to make decisions that could impact green space, opportunities to protect land along the rivers, stormwater development policies. But I, my hope is that it will point those investments where they make the most sense. And in the end, the goal is to retain that sense of wildlife recreational value. Cincinnati is really using it as an economic driver, as a revitalization effort in there for Cincinnati. But also, you know, some infrastructure things, like sustainability of riverbanks. I was on the river this summer, and houses built right upon the edge of the river. And so when you add a lot of runoff to rivers, they, they become less stable and start to corrode and move a little bit, so preventing those types of issues and impacts, we're just infrastructures and other things to do it. So it's not regulatory, but it's gonna help answer the question about what's the, you know, the limiting factor about what's affecting the river. So with the, with the model, a report is generated, there's a threat of susceptibility rankings. So that's for areas that are doing well, like the Darby right now, doing outstanding. It also will give you a restorability ranking. That's where Chicago and Cincinnati already can help. And they're asking, how much repair work do we have to do to get this river up to an acceptable level? Which I can tell you is much more expensive than avoidance. So, and the way it would be applied here is kind of looking at what do we need to do to avoid the situation? So, and also, it gets uploaded online, and there's a dashboard, there's a future manual, so people can query it and ask their own questions, that would be a part of it as well. So ODNR has committed fifty thousand dollars to help run the model. Now we're going to various jurisdictions and asking for partnership on that. So we have talked to Madison County, they made a funding commitment. Franklin's Northern Water, the Nature Conservancy has a little book on it, we can, we are talking to Union County. So we're, we're getting around to everybody. So that's all I have for the night, Mr. D. Smith.
Heather, what do you need as kind of a sign?
Well, we'd like to, I forgot to mention, the EPA is also considering helping to fund it too, so they could be another major partner in it. We would love to know in the next month or two, as we would love to, we would love to get started. It will take a while, it'll take some time to build it, amount of data that we need.
Can emphasize, I'll place it, what sort of commitment would you be looking for?
I think so, I think something in the ten to twenty, I think all the research would be beneficial. But I don't know, the EPA hasn't really weighed in yet on what their commitment might be, and that will affect things. But I, I hope to know that from then in the next month or so.
Any other questions?
That's my question.
Did I read there's an ongoing financial responsibility due, after we get the report?
When you get the report, that's true. It depends, helps you set some thresholds. But then, you know, what do you do with those after that? And the city is doing a lot of that kind of work right now already, you know, reflected, it can be reflected in your zoning code, it can be reflected in opportunities to get green space, stormwater. So, you know, like, data's good, but how you put it to action, this takes additional resources.
And did you say that people can, like, log onto the site and ask questions? Like, and then, but then, like, that can interpret the data as well?
Oh, I think, you know, there, there will, there will be all this data, and you can query it for what you want to know. It uses, they use Power BI, which is an Microsoft product that was not necessarily intended for, you know, this type of environment modeling, but it works in us for you right now with those other two cities. Yes, but you can go and kind of ask, say, well, what if we, we did this, what would happen? We, we change, you know, for instance, the big topic here is, you know, we had new entities that had new permits into the river, what would that mean in terms of loading or not loading? If that makes any sense. Yes, you would have control of that data and be able to kind of ask some questions about it.
So their models are already out there that we can check out?
Yes, and I, I shared with Hallie the Chicago's report, and they're...
I'll order that after council.
I have to admit, it's pretty, it's, it's pretty technical stuff.
Yeah.
And their reports really do focus more, they, the report focuses a lot on how it gets to the stress threshold for different kinds of species. And it's, you know, like, I'm a pseudobiologist, and it's kind of hard to, like, I don't know the data to be quite so much as to order that one. So it, but yeah, that is available, we can share it with you. But a lot of it does focus on the restorability rankings.
Yeah.
And for them, it's, you know, which stream segments are worth spending money on doing restoration? And are they actually restorable, or is it just a two-part line? So, yes, that exists, and I share those.
Can Mr. D. Smith, if we can have a future discussion, or take it to Hannah? Any other questions?
Now, is the goal to kind of have the IPS kind of the whole length of the Darby?
Yes, it would apply for the entire watershed. And really, you can ask it, kind of, you can ask, it'll give you kind of information on a sub watershed scale. So the area, the part of the watershed that it would provide for Plain City is Plain City plus some, and around, like, Jerome Township, but I think all the way from down the watershed. And our intent, I mean, this is really valuable if all the jurisdictions are using it. We very much would love to see that happen. We're further down the road, talking to different jurisdictions and others, and I'm really pleased that I feel like we've spent, developed a lot of relationships here in Plain City, and I feel like we, it's easier for me to have this conversation with you than with some that I haven't been with as much, so. And the other part, though, is that it'll draw from enough data from across the upper side of the basin that it's possible that it would be useful for other jurisdictions, like all of this, like the Licking River, that, that area where, you know, Intel was a bigger jurisdiction, or something like that, that's a possibility as well. So I think it may, it may have order of operations.
Well, we appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you, thank you for your sharing, I'll have to get through. I also have, I just have a, just a fact sheet about the Darby Creek, you know, passage around. I don't know, some of you may have seen this before, but appreciate it, thank you.
Is it possible to do another canoe float, because I know, like, I missed that date, and I'm not sure if anybody, who all here went on the... So would you go again?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah?
I'd love to do that. It's a big part of my job, so.
That's the fun part.
Yeah, that's the fun part, that's right. So, yeah, I'm happy to figure about scheduling, you know, and I'm more the mayor.
I always enjoy the creeking events. I think it's just like, I learn something new every time, just getting in and discovering.
I was really happy to be able to partner with the First American Park, and we just have another date for May, come back and see that, and check it in. But that's really what we're doing that, so.
It's really lightning, all the different fish species that's in there, and, and like, right there, just where you go in down at McKittrick, you don't realize that, like, how much they've, is right there.
I think that's what's magical about it, is you don't know it's there until you have the right mentor.
Thank you. All right, moving into reports, since the holidays, I got back into the swing of things and working on, we're having a solar eclipse planning meeting on Wednesday at one o'clock. Staff and PD and hopefully Fire and the school district are coming together to talk about safety contingency plans, because it's starting to really amp up, and I ordered extra solar eclipse glasses on Amazon today because I know the village only has sixteen hundred?
I think that's right.
Okay, two thousand? So, after knowing that those are gonna go quickly and everything, so that's, that's amping up here for in April. Also, met with staff and talked about different, the events calendar, and then that kind of led into a separate discussion about different business events, and so I talked to a few uptown businesses about trying to get better on our schedule with events, like to promote and how to help. So, Mr. Stanford, I'll be talking with you, because I talked to a few others, and they're excited for a session to hash some ideas out. With that, I will hand it over to our village administrator, Ms. Leptin.
Thank you. The streetscape for the southeast portion of the sidewalk, which can help Thursday, we're hoping that can get mobilized as soon as the weather allows for. Our crews continue to be prepared for winter weather. The trucks are ready if the storms come. The water and river transition is wrapping up. There've been several small issues, but nothing we haven't been able to work through. Appreciate our staff and the district staff's constant assistance on that. Tonight, I also, once a month, we're going to ask Jason to come and give a development update, if that's okay, and a recording section, so I just wanted to highlight that. That's all for me, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leptin, and Ms. Sonnet, our finance director.
Thank you, ma'am. We're on year-end polls, so hopefully in the next week or so, we should have good numbers to have compared to twenty-three, but, or Jackson's, but.
Thank you, Ms. Sonnet. Chief McKee, please report.
Yes, just to hit on the eclipse event, I'm not with, I'm not with all the Union County, all of course, the agencies in the area. They're, they're, the DMA, Union County DMA, and Sheriff's Offices, they're, they're planning this as a big event. They're expecting traffic jams, they're expecting gas stations to be out of fuel, they're expecting a lot of stuff. I have a list of stuff, they're actually asking us to maybe, there's some intersections that are kind of close to the village during that day. We're gonna have our, probably our own issues here that day to deal with this. I mean, Marysville schools are closed, all our schools are closed, a lot of businesses are closing. It's, it's, they're expecting people to be following, people walking driveways, people in their yards, and all kinds of stuff, so the only thing that might stop that will be Pat Wucker, our business. Uh, so this is, I'm probably going to need to, was this, we discussed some of this with the fire department and everything. Uh, and then secondly, all the police officers, all the units completed their annual active shooter training at Plain City Elementary School, um, last week. Uh, secondly, the ninth Columbus will be conducting a public march on January twentieth, twenty twenty-four, Zen Street, uh, in favor of pro-life movement on the anniversary of the Supreme Court decision legalizing abortion. Uh, they are requesting no street closures to be done for this, it's all going on the sidewalks. They'll probably go from Saint Joseph Church all the way through town to the, uh, Activities Center down to Fire Department. Uh, they've done this in the past a couple of times, not this far actually, they usually just go from the Activities Center, a town then back, but they usually don't block the roads or anything, they usually just use the sidewalks. We will probably have to stop traffic at a couple of intersections for them, so just, I, you know, there's usually twenty or thirty people from that. You know, I'm basically this year. And then lastly, I would just like to thank the Plain City Polar Bear Group, uh, for the donation to the Plain City Police Department. So I have just time here, thank you.
Thank you, Chief McKee. And our developments report?
Great, thank you, Mayor, a couple of things for you tonight, I just wanted to, um, I guess announce or repeat, um, it's on Facebook, the grand opening for me, some arrows in our little area out here will be this Friday. Uh, the time is not yet announced, but we are trying to work with them to make sure we can do the actual presentation for them as well. So once that information comes out, we will be sure to email you guys, as much as you all know. Very, very excited to welcome them to Plain City. Um, so you were earlier pointing there about meeting with the uptown businesses, I do have my first meeting scheduled on Wednesday with a few of the uptown, uh, business owners to start talking about the twenty twenty-four events, primarily what the area on May will look like, and then also some small business Saturday planning. So we have a little bit of time, um, but excited to get that going and see how we can be better partners with what the uptown community. Uh, we also continue to work on the new incentive policy, uh, we've been engaged with the school district, uh, pretty regularly throughout this process. I know I'm about a year late on that, but, uh, hopefully here we'll have an actual proposal to you guys. Um, we, we do have an initial framework that we will be presenting, uh, first to the Board of Education in February. And based on their feedback, we will tweak things and bring it back to you guys for, uh, consideration and ultimately approval. Um, and finally, we are working on a couple of annexations, uh, we have one on the agenda, a couple of agenda items related to annexations tonight. Um, we're very, um, excited to see you start coming through, it'll be a busy year of what we're hearing. Um, but I wanted to say that I will be available to address your questions during that appropriate agenda item for annexations. And that's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sanford, Council President, Mr. Terry.
Um, nothing to report, no one has any conflicts in that council retreat, it was good, nothing to report.
Thank you, Mr. Terry, and Ms. Hudson, our law director.
I don't have anything to report.
Thank you, uh, Development and Marketing Committee.
Uh, we meet January twenty-third at eleven AM.
Thank you, Ms. Ferguson.
We, we canceled January.
Oh, we did, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
We canceled.
It's in February, no, it's okay. Thank you, Ms. Ferguson, uh, Board of Zoning Appeals?
Uh, nothing for January, and I think probably the one change, Ms. Hudson, correct me, is, um, I think the stated meeting dates have moved from where they're traditionally at to being on Tuesdays or.
Yeah, so, yeah, so the meeting was just going to be the second, uh, second Wednesday.
Or second Wednesday.
And keep in line with the other boards, um, also, we, we just, we had lack of members, uh, this year or this month, so we want to make sure our first meeting, we had it over there, so we can, we can address points here and get rules on that.
Thank you, Mr. Hutchinson and Mr. Harriman, um, also, I am reaching out to, um, Mr. Robbins, who ran for council to, um, he said he'd like to be involved, so for BCA, but we still are looking for one more, um, BCA member, for sure. And Planning and Zoning, we have a meeting, I'm trying to, it's the third.
Twenty, twenty-four?
The seventeen, yes, that's what I was trying to like do there. And, um, I'm going to defer to Mr. Hutchinson, do we have?
Yes, so we have a final development plan for the spot.
Thank you, Mr. Hutchinson. Parks and Recreation Committee.
Yeah, our, our meeting is tomorrow at nine, no, it's not at nine, it's tomorrow, the ninth, at six-thirty. Uh, the Active Ages Walking Program starts January seventeenth and it goes through March twenty-second and it's Monday, Wednesday, Friday from nine AM to eleven. Uh, there are two open seats on the committee and committee interest forms are already posted on the website. Uh, contract for the aquatics feasibility study has been signed and is underway. The twenty twenty-four calendar of events should be released within the next week and development, the Development Department and Parks and Rec Department now have the ability to gauge attendance at events. And to give you an example, in twenty twenty-three, July fourth was about, was gauged at about seven thousand one hundred, Fall Fest was three thousand one hundred, and Christmas under the clock was thirty-five hundred.
That's impressive. Thank you, Mr. Sins.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Um, anything on tree commission?
Was that me too?
Yes, that is you too, I'm so sorry.
No.
Okay. I think we're still waiting.
I will have more information after my first meeting.
Okay. Um, Personnel and Finance and CIP.
Thank you, Mayor, we had a meeting on Thursday, um, mainly focused around the frustrations in filling the open police, uh, officer role. It's been open for, I think, four months now, so we had a good discussion about what recruitment activities we're doing. Then also tasked, um, Haley with doing some financial analysis on what we could, you know, possibly look at for, you know, raise structures for, you know, you can throw money at it, you can, and we also looked at what else can we do besides throwing money at the problem? So we're kind of looking at both of those possibilities. So we'll have, uh, I think our next meeting is February eighth, uh, looking for, um, it's looking to have some ideas on the financial side of it and also, uh, ask Chief to kind of do a formal, not formal report, but really document what we're doing from recruitment activity, so we make sure that we're looking at it from all sides.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis, I appreciate your reports on that, and yes, I know that it's a big task right there. Fire Board, Mr. Terry?
Yeah, so we had our first meeting, uh, organization meeting, uh, we went over the opening balances, uh, revenues look good, um, expenditures were good, um, overall, our runs ended up staying down, um, for the year, which is good. Um, it was attributable to a few individuals that, uh, had moved out of town, they actually think. Uh, so outside of that, they said it was about flat, so, um, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Terry, um, Rules Committee update.
Uh, Rules Committee update, yes, uh, we do have a meeting tonight. Um, I will be working on the final comments per Rules Committee request, I'm hoping that it's in the near future.
Thank you, Mr. Dryer, thank you. All right, moving out of reports into our discussion items, Uptown Commercial Overlay District.
Good evening, where we left off, um, December sixth, we had an extensive discussion and work session regarding the historic district. Staff explained, um, to bring everybody up to speed, why we do not feel the planning certified local government is beneficial to the community, that Planning and Zoning had already approved the proposed Uptown Commercial Overlay District, so it's prepared to come to council unless significant changes are needed. And that due to the expiration of terms and resignation of board members, the Designer Review Board is not ready to proceed with processing application. Since December sixth, we have received one application that with the old process would go to DRB. It's a great example of why we're suggesting the new process, it's a simple sign for a successful uptown business that we want to help support in any way possible. The business owner has already waited several weeks and will now have to wait several weeks more for approval and a sign that will match everybody else's sign. Um, so staff is recommending that we move forward with legislation one way or another. Um, Mr. Hutchinson's here tonight to add to the discussion, um, any questions or anything else that needs to be added?
I have a question on that exact application. If we proceed to go forth with changing the process, would we just have them simply reapply?
As far as if, if we keep our good for the new process, it, it would just be a, yeah, it'd just be a sign permit that they.
Yeah, then we'd just have to like reapply under the new, cause they're, cause their grandfather under a process that would kind of go bad.
Yeah, yeah, and, and, and when, when someone even under the DRB now, they submit a sign permit as well, so it, there's no extra paperwork documents that they actually go out, it's weird to have.
And then my only other question that I have is why is there a public hearing on the agenda for this? If we've already had the public hearing?
The two public hearings tonight are not related.
They're not related, perfect, all right, cool, that answers my question.
And I want to echo the comments that Planning and Zoning, um, that passed the Overlay District one hundred percent. Um, they see the vision for this legislation. And also want to thank Mr. Hutchinson's time for putting into it to come up with something that is going to be very successful for the future of our village.
Yeah, I would say I'd echo being on, on the committee, we spent a lot of time going over it. I know at the December meeting, there are some comments made that I don't think were accurate from what the committee vision and decided was. Um, I think it was stated there was going to be all glass buildings that were there. If you read the code, it says seventy-five percent of the building has to be brick minimum, so they're not going to be all modern glass. Um, I think it really encompassed what our vision is and Mr. Sins said, you know, I think we talked to the candidates tonight and Mr. Lewis, you know, of like, hey, we have kind of our three or four anchor buildings downtown, these are the models for anything that would be the, in addition to, something we're get built or redone, that this is what it looks like, and, and that's what the overlay document really encompasses. And I think it does a nice job of having pictures, so that way if people come in for signs or for designs or paint, like, this is the style that, you know, we're wanting to have for the, the uptown area. So, I think, nice job with that.
Any other discussion on this topic? Moving into our public hearing for ZZ dash twenty-three dash four, Amendment of the Codified Ordinances, Chapter eleven thirty-seven, Definitions of Part eleven of the Planning and Zoning Code. Um, before we open the public hearing, I am going to, um, introduce staff to give an update of the, what the intent on this is.
Yeah, so this is just, uh, it's really the cleanup, uh, we introduced the new ED section, uh, by removing the old section, they removed the definitions, so we simply added two bar, uh, existing definitions now, so it's just, it's just adding back what was removed from the old, old section.
Any questions before? Okay, I will open the public hearing for ZZ dash twenty-three dash four. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on behalf of this Amendment of Codified Ordinances? Having no one coming forward, I will now close the public hearing for ZZ dash twenty-three dash four. We are about to have a public hearing for ZZ dash twenty-three dash five, Amendment of the Codified Ordinances, Chapter eleven eighty-three dot one-one, Park Fee of Part eleven of the Planning and Zoning Code, Mr. Hutchinson?
This also is a zoning oversight, uh, in twenty twenty, we updated the park fee, uh, and the park fee is actually in two separate sections and it's never updated in this section, so this is just really matching the other updated, uh, code.
I will open the public hearing for ZZ dash twenty-three dash five. Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of this public hearing? I will now close the public hearing for ZZ dash twenty-three dash five. We do not have any unfinished business, moving into new business. First reading ordinance thirty-six dash twenty twenty-three, amending the Codified Ordinances Edition of Chapter eleven eighty-five dot zero-six, Uptown Commercial Overlay District and the removal of Chapter thirteen twenty-seven of Part thirteen of the Building Code. First reading ordinance one dash twenty twenty-four, amending the Codified Ordinances, Chapter eleven thirty-seven, Definitions of Part eleven of the Planning and Zoning Code. First reading ordinance two dash twenty twenty-four, amending the Codified Ordinances, Chapter eleven eighty-three dot one-one, Park Fee of Part eleven of the Planning and Zoning Code.
Mayor, just to expedite the process, since we've already updated the other portion, um, I'm going to motion to waive the second reading of ordinance zero-two twenty twenty-four.
Is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Dryer, would you take the roll?
Mr. Yehler?
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Harriman?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Sins?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes. Motion to approve, uh, ordinance zero-two twenty twenty-four?
Uh, motion to approve?
Could we waive the second reading now, we have to approve it?
Yes, so that was a motion, or is that a second?
Yep, that was a second.
Okay.
Mr. Harriman?
Yes.
Mr. Sins?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Yehler?
Yes.
Ordinance two dash twenty twenty-four passes six to zero. First reading ordinance three dash twenty twenty-four, amending the Codified Ordinances, Chapter one eighty-seven, Income Tax Effective, January first, twenty twenty, of Part one of the Administrative Code. First reading resolution one dash twenty twenty-four, authorizing the execution of a contract with GovDeals Inc. for internet-based auction services for twenty twenty-four. First reading resolution two dash twenty twenty-four, amending resolution thirty-two dash twenty twenty-three to update the wage scale of employees of the Plain City Police Department.
This is just correcting the typo.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to appro, a motion to waive second reading resolution zero-one, oh, sorry, zero-two twenty twenty-four?
Second.
Here, second, it's, go ahead, sorry.
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Harriman?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Sins?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve resolution zero-two twenty twenty-four?
I think that's zero-three.
I think I want zero-two, right?
Yes, the, the wage scale.
Oh, the wage scale, oh, sorry.
Was there a second on that?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Sins seconded.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Sins?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Harriman?
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Yehler?
Yes.
Resolution two dash twenty twenty-four passes six to nothing. First reading resolution three dash twenty twenty-four, stating what services the Village of Plain City will provide to the proposed annexation of property at zero, one zero three three five and one zero six three five US forty-two, and requesting a waiver of the second reading. And this is Beechey Farms.
And Mayor, can I just add real quick, since I'm adjacent to that property, um, on the notice, I'm just going to be out of any discussions or anything with that, so.
Thank you, Mr. Harriman.
Maybe we could have a couple of sentences on why we need to waive the second reading?
Sure, thank you, um, yeah, so this is more or less a clerical requirement by the state of Ohio. We had a petition filed with the county commissioners, I believe it was the Friday before Christmas. And as part of that, we are required within twenty days to submit back, uh, to the county, basically a statement of services, what we as the village would offer that property if annexation is approved. This is required of all annexations, um, it doesn't accept the annexation, it's just basically saying again, we would offer police protection or garbage collection, things like that. So that's why that is, um, a, why we are requesting a waiver of the second reading. We, we, we basically have till tomorrow, uh, to give this agreement back to the county, uh, for filing by the debt. So normally without the holidays, we would have been able to do the normal two, uh, two readings, but with the holidays, it kind of kicked, kicked it back.
Now, we, and, and I apologize if I'm just naive on this, we've annexed plenty of times, we do pre-annexation agreements plenty of times. Is this usually buried in the pre-annexation? Why, I don't believe we normally have a what's ser- Why, I don't believe we normally have a what services separate from everything else. Is, unless I'm wrong, it feels like this is different.
The last one, uh, was for Will Cox, which was passed by, I think, one to twenty-seventh March. So we, it is probably more just, it gets lost in the general, then use it, it's not really, I don't wanna say important, but it's more, yeah, a clerical thing. Same with the pre-annexation agreement, we, we, we know about that, too.
Thank you, Mr. Stanford.
Uh, motion to approve second?
Motion to waive.
Waive, sorry, I meant, motion to waive the second reading of Resolution zero-three dash twenty twenty-four?
Second.
Mr. Harriman?
Uh, same.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Ms. Yedder?
Yes.
Mr. Sins?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Five pass one abstain, abstention?
Motion to approve Resolution zero-three twenty twenty-four?
Second.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Ms. Yedder?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Harriman?
Absent.
Mr. Sins?
Yes.
And motion passes with five yes and one abstention. First Reading Resolution four dash twenty twenty-four, Authorizing and directing the village administrator to enter into a pre-annexation agreement with Paragon Building Group, LTD.
And this is the developer for the Beechey property.
First Reading Resolution five dash twenty twenty-four, Authorizing the incorporation of the Plain City Area Development Corporation. And that concludes our public portion of our meeting. We are about to go into executive session pursuant to Ohio Revise Code, Section one twenty-one dot two-two G eight, to consider confidential information related to negotiations with other political subdivisions. Ms. Lepton, yes?
I'm sorry, I'm a little bit off, just, there's fifty, tell us how, sort of, I'll see my office.
They wanna see the ceiling, right? That's exactly. Uh, thank you, Chief McKee, and?
We will not be returning.
We will not be returning with any further?
We will ask, uh, Mr. Stanford and.
Okay, and, uh, does Mr. Van Tilburg or?
Uh, Ms. Sonnet.
Uh, Ms. Sonnet, okay.
Uh, Randy Oms.
Okay. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
I'll, I'll motion to go into executive session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Yedder?
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Harriman?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Sins?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Um, motion, or, pass six to zero.